Yeah, they start early, so they review. Well, by the time they get through with sectionals, do they do regionals?
Do if anybody gets to go.
If they keep going through, it would?
Yeah, for golf, they would have to.
Because I know cross-country, my daughter, she's from a cross-country high school, and their sectional starts first Saturday of October. At least, I've seen on the calendar, and then it's boom, 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 or we finish up like the weekend before Halloween right there.
Right when it starts to get cool, some of the times it's not very nice.
They struggled Saturday. They were down in Annapolis, and you know, they started picking up, and they hadn't had to deal with that for a while. Continue with the Wells County budget review. I guess at this time, I think that you emailed everybody there some of the information.
Yeah, the last email I sent to you.
All that you kind of.
Is a little better than the first email I got.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, there was a number of changes again from the DLGF.
Yeah, changed. Nobody quite knows what to do with a levy freeze, you know, so anyhow, when they... Our levy growth will actually start back from 2009.
So it goes back and picks it up.
What our levy was back then. That's where our growth comes from.
That's where we start from, you're saying?
That's where our growth goes under that, yet we've had increases in our lowest, so that's increased over the years, so that adds to it, but anyhow. Anyhow, what we thought was going to be our levy was less, it ended up being less than by about 50 something thousand, I think.
Yeah, fifty-six something.
Yeah, fifty-six thousand or something like that. So at first, it was like 190, that was really giving me a heart attack, but George couldn't subtract right. So that helped a lot, so, yes. You know, because he had to confirm with the state, and then he got back, and he says, "Then I don't subtract," and I didn't check his subtraction either at first, and then, you know, I seen, because I just, I'm like, "This ain't right, this can't be right." And so anyhow, it did end up being less of a levy. We won't be able to, we won't be able to get as high a levy as what we wanted, or what we thought we was going to get, wanted, but what we thought we could get. And it's all because of the fall, the way figuring out how the levy was increased. So we'll know that from going forward, but we was the first levy-free county for George to fall. So he checked with another gal that's had, and that's where he, because I kept questioning him before I advertised, which I did advertise right before I came over here, so it's been posted as advertised in Gateway. But I kept questioning him, I said, "This don't look right, this is don't look right," and he checked, and it ended up being what it is. So with that, I went back, and I kind of checked with the 2% increase in wages, and, you know, pretty well what we thought we might use in social security, perf, even, I think, went down a little bit in the health insurance. You know, to try to make it work where it can work. So I've made it, I've made it, I've made some changes, so I'll run those past you all, and then I have some questions as we go along. Okay. Let's see, and most of it was commissioners. So commissioners, I deducted another 25,000 from the social security, another 20,000.
I'm sorry, how much was social security?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. And 20,000 from the retirement, 20,000 from health.
Another 25 from retirement, was it?
Twenty.
Oh, twenty, okay.
Mm-hmm. And health, I went ahead and decreased it by 20,000, keeping our fingers crossed on Section 125, I went ahead and decreased that 5,000.
Because...
Because...
I mean, that, what is that?
Section 125 is the, what they call a cafeteria plan.
Flexible spending account.
Flexible spending account. And sometimes, we have to fund some in that at beginning of the year, but we've had it, when we switched companies a couple of years ago, we've put more in, but now we're pretty well caught up. We've got a balance out there now, so we've not putting as much in there. So I went ahead and decreased that 5,000. Unemployment, I decreased that amount by, I decreased it 5,000. And computer maintenance, I decreased it 1,500. It would be a three number, but I didn't write the number down.
Okay. Does that mean that's the count?
1,500, I took 1,500 off of that.
Okay.
So after I kind of ran the, I figured that's where we could probably go to based on what our increase in salaries is, so hopefully that's pretty close. But, you know, it's hard to estimate because of overtime, and, you know, with the sheriffs and jailers and stuff like that.
It's a calculating process.
You know, it's kind of hard to get it exactly. And then my other question on that is, I don't remember if you guys really made the decision or not on the salary for the commissioners. You said the council did not want to take an increase, but what about the commissioners? Did you decide on that? I needed to know on that one.
We mentioned that, that we looked back last year, and we thought at the time that they were compensated fairly adequately compared to other counties of similar size.
Similar size, so were we, so I was, my suggestion is both council and commissioners stay the same, that's my...
I believe that's what Steve had mentioned as well, wasn't it?
Well, I don't know.
I'm not sure to kind of finish that discussion.
Because we talked about, we don't want to let too many years go by without any increases, because then you get behind the eight ball, and then you start going behind, so, but I think at this stage, my personal feeling...
Which is the point that Vicky brought up, I do believe, yes.
I think both us and the commissioners, if we stay the same, that helps the situation.
Jim? That's fine with me.
Okay. So that's the question I have on that. I sort of took care of the deductions I had too, but I kind of got through every, I guess through every single thing except for the jail before I got here today. Ugh, running out of time, that's why I was running a little bit late, I had to get to a stopping point. But the next question I had came in on the, it's under the health budget, but it's not the health department, it's the local health department, trust account.
Oh, back there's the health.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I didn't get to the jail, but, yeah, yeah. Well, I have like three programs I use, I make sure all three of them match.
No, we're fine.
So I'm matching the, for the second, and I got overruled at the jail. But anyhow, under the local health department trust account, which is fund number 1206, and that particular one has a grant administrator, where we pay an extra $3,000 for that grant administrator, and there is an increase on that. I just wanted to double-check, are we increasing anything other than salaries?
It shows a 4% increase is what she's saying.
Usually, we've always just kept it at 3,000, so I, you know, that's just one of those, I didn't want to make that choice, that's, I just needed to check with you, because that's a salary increase, so.
I would say that we normally do that the same.
It has been.
Whenever we do a percent increase across the board, it doesn't get anything.
Right, it's usually on the salary, but this is an additional, you know, an additional stipend, you know, however you want to put it, you know, so if you want to increase that 2%, or if you want to leave it just at this rate, I just need to know which way you want to go on that for the salary.
My feelings are, under the conditions of what we're dealing with, was strictly, as tight as the budget is, leave it the same.
I would agree.
That's nice. I mean, we're kind of trying to pinch everything we can find here to...
Yep, I agree.
You're saying?
No increase, you want us to give it the 3,000.
Just remain the same as last year's, flatline it from last year's.
So it's a trust account, do we have to add that extra on one of the other items or something? Because don't they have to make it zero out?
No.
Not on this?
Not on this one.
Okay.
No, they budget for everything, but, you know, they always, you know, salaries is always kind of.
So that would just mean...
And they can transfer sometimes too, and they have to get a state approval also to transfer all these grants, so.
So it would just stay at 3,000?
Mm-hmm, if that's what you...
Yeah.
I'll have to check on that, and then, okay, the next thing I came to is after we left the budget, the assessor had came in, and he was questioning the deduction we did on the appeal expense. And he explained to me, which I didn't notice either, that his general fund budget would pay for any appeals, or any of that expense, would be appeals on personal property. The reassessment account can only pay for real property, they can't do personal property.
So that's the reason why he hasn't...
So that's why I had him too. So I asked him, I said, "Well, what if we just deduct 5,000 from the general fund, and then 5,000 from the reassessment fund?" They're both levied funds, but, you know, that way he has money for, to do appeals for personal property, and, yeah, he would have money to do for appeals for real property.
So he wants to keep it at 5,000 then for the general fund?
Yeah.
He would be okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, well, he was requesting 10, so I asked him, "Can we go 5,000 on that, and then on his reassessment, where he had 15,000, if we could move that down to 10,000?"
So it's neutral, it's a different account?
Yeah.
He was okay?
It's a different fund, but, you know, it's a levy fund, but that way he would be able to have funds available for either personal property or real property.
He was okay?
Yeah, he said he was fine with that, and I just wanted to, you guys, see if he was okay with that.
And Jared had made mention that on this general pair, that was actually in his letter, we didn't catch that, that's actually a maintenance item.
In the surveyor.
In the surveyor.
Sure, sure.
If you go to the letter that I sent, I think it's in the packet, on the second page, the next year last, the general repairs is, repairs to our equipment, it's software maintenance, that type of thing, the civil 3D, Autocad civil 3D software that you guys approved last year has a maintenance contract with that.
Okay.
So that $700 was to pay for that.
Okay.
But I think it's in like maybe the paragraph.
I see, I see.
But anyway, what we did do is we actually eliminated the $1,000 line item. There was a $1,000 line item for cornerstone recovery. Since the legislature changed that statute for that dedicated fund, we actually eliminated that $1,000, so we took 1,000 away there in the truck repairs. I don't think Jim maybe had a question about that, but there's two separate repairs. There's general repairs for office things, and there's truck that's specific to that. We actually reduced that $100, so we reduced 1,100 total out of budget. There were a few minor changes, otherwise, that we actually went up about $240 from what last year's budget was. 300 of that is in the clerical system. I understand you guys are kind of pinched, and I understand that, and if you need to cut somewhere, if you take away that 300 extra in the clerical line item...
So if we go ahead and put back the 700 into that general repairs, or keep it 1,600, and if we took the 300 out?
If you take the 300 out of that, I mean, it's actually $60 less, I think, than what I budgeted last year, but...
That's fine.
That's fine, I'm not going to squabble with the pennies.
Yeah.
But that would, I guess that kind of...
You'd be okay there?
Yes, we'll move with that.
I don't see a problem with that, you guys.
No.
So we'll go ahead and take the 300 out of the clerical assistance?
Okay.
Keep that at 2,000, yeah.
That's 1,700?
Yeah, 1,700.
Seventeen.
And then add back in the seven, keep the 1,600 then?
For general repairs.
For general repairs.
Yes.
Just like I say, I think it ends up, I think it ends up like $60 less.
No, that's fine, you know, when we're doing some of this stuff, we, especially when we're under the, you know, under the gun like we are...
What we typically did was we would take all the pennies that were left over in all the funds and put it in the clerical.
Yeah.
So we're trying to just raise that like we used to.
No, it's fine.
I do have, well, I'm not sure, I have a question or comment or a suggestion, or every year, when we get into the salaries, it seems like there's a lot of drama over that. And as a supervisor, it's kind of hard for me to go to, and I only have one deputy, it's hard for me to say, "Okay, here's what you have to do to better yourself, here's what you have to do to get an increase in pay," because I don't know. Can any of you tell me what I need to tell my deputy, or can you tell me what I need to do? And really, it seems like every year, for those 13 years that I've been involved in the budget, I think Jim, you're the only one that's been on here the whole time that I have. It's like a struggle every year to figure out what the, where the bar is set, where the, we've got six months before the next budget starts, and there's 12, 13 different departments in the county. It would be nice if you guys, who are the board of directors for this corporation, could set some guidelines, that's, set the bar, tell me, tell me what I need to do, tell what, so I tell the deputy what she needs to do, tell the sheriff's department what they need to do, tell the health department or whoever, what do you have to do to move to that next level? And I understand that money is always the key thing, but it's a real struggle. Like I say, if you do a couple of departments every meeting for the next six months, before budget time, next time we'll have a goal in mind. And right now, we don't have that.
And then some of this year was a curveball to us, because I didn't, you know, it was, we got closer and closer, we were, we knew we were going to be, things were getting more complicated, and they were coming back to us with some different numbers that we didn't expect, and then it just kept getting worse and worse, basically. And, you know, and not trying to put any blame, you know, blame on the DLGF, but they were kind of dragging, everything got dragged later this year, so we really didn't even know in June where things were even standing technically, so, but I understand.
For 13 years, been doing this.
And then the other years were...
And I know there's some years that, "Well, we don't give a cost of living because social security didn't get one." Okay, fair excuse. For several years, "Well, we're in the recession, if we can just get over that hump, if we can just get over that hump." Well, we're over the hump, didn't change anything. Last year, we talked about using counties of similar population, and I know, I think there were three offices that you moved halfway to that average, but we didn't move the rest of the way this year. I mean, it's like every year, it's a different, I hate, and I'm not being critical of you guys, every year, there's a different reason why we can't do it. We've never come up with a reason why we can't. And we, nobody in the county government, Beth, me, anybody that works at that courthouse every day, none of us have a clear direction of what do we have to do to make it better. And you guys are the financial branch of this. You guys make that decision. I can't imagine that a business has managers and supervisors, and they say, "Okay, what do we need to do, what goals do we need to have?" And the managers, the board of directors just go, "Meh, we'll see what happens next year." That's not a good management strategy.
Yeah.
We need to have some guidance, and I think there's time before next year for that to happen. And I don't know what criteria you'd use for me, I don't know, I don't know for the sheriff's department, do you want them to arrest 10% of people?
No, I don't.
Or do you want them to arrest 10% less? I don't know what the criteria is, you know. For me, do you want me to find more cornerstones, or find less cornerstone, you know, what do you want me to do? The other thing that we've talked, that I've talked about for several years, and it seems to get skipped over every time, is the statute that deals with the surveyor's salary and the licensed versus unlicensed. And I've asked for a few years, can that be in the salary ordinance, and we seem to skip over it every year? That the, you know, law says that there's two tiers of salary, if you're licensed and unlicensed, there's a spread between them, and we don't put it in there. Are we going to do that this year, are we going to talk about it, or do you want to talk about it, or what? You don't have to budget for it, I'm not a registered surveyor, you don't have to budget for that salary.
Well...
But it needs to be in the salary ordinance.
Well, I would be the first to say that when elected officials or even staff come forward and say, "Well, by state statute, this is a requirement of this position," I don't think the board goes against that, and that would be a fair point.
And I know right now, you're not doing the salary ordinance, that comes November, December, whenever it is. But we seem to, we talk about it a little bit at budget time, or we skip over it at budget time, and then we don't talk about it again until then next year is budget time again. So just, I guess, like I say, it was in the letter, we talked about it for a few years, but I'd like to see. And that statute's not new, it's not something that just happened, it was enacted in the age. It's not something that just happened. That's all I have.
Thank you, realtor.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else that you...
No, yeah, I've got several notes, sorry.
Okay, okay.
The next one comes to the election board, it's under the clerk. And that is the same situation as the question about the grant administrator. There's some additional salaries added for that, so I need to know if those will be increased or if they're the same.
These are two of them?
Well, it was secretary and then for clerical assistant.
Remember, we had this discussion last year, didn't we? When we were dealing with the clerks?
Well, it's addition, it's an additional salary that's added to the thing, so I'm just saying.
The clerk gets that, right?
Well, they can.
Whoever, whoever they decide to be there.
Well, as secretary, yes, by statute, they can be added a compensation. But my question is, is do you want to increase that also, along with the salary, or are you thinking of the same?
No, I don't, I don't feel we're increasing...
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Yeah, that's the 246 for secretary.
It's the, well, the total request is 46.
Thirty-three.
Under secretary.
Yeah, it'd be 43, 86.
Yeah, go back to 43, 86, okay.
And then the same thing with the clerical assistant, which, you know, she did go over that, where the staff does work, and, but that was increasing that salary also, and that is added to the salary ordinance, so that's why I asked, I need to know.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking the same for both, what they wrote in 2017. It gets confusing when you have an election year, election year, everything increases there, and then when there's a non-election year, it almost back down, so it's like...
Yeah, it's hard to follow.
Yeah, to follow.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the budget, she, you know, she budgets for what you need, but those are additional salaries.
Because this is the second time for general election, right, for the voting center, so we're...
Yeah, yeah.
The next election would be it, so it would be the next one for what we're...
When we talk about salaries, I have to, I have to know that.
Yeah, interesting.
The next thing I came to, I just wanted to make note of, is on the coroner's budget. I have moved the deputy two down to the contractual services, since that is paid by, on contract with those people, so they don't, they don't go into our salary, they go into...
Not number one, just number two?
Yeah, she has one deputy, but yes, the number two deputy.
Just number two?
Since we don't have a number two deputy, the budget stays the same, but I just, you know, I moved that because it doesn't come into a W2, it gets a 1099.
Okay.
So I have to move it out of the one series down to the three series. So, just so you have that note. Yes.
Yeah, that number?
Well, 1,000, she requested 1,000 dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So it's just going to be the 1,000?
Yeah, it's just that 1,000, yeah. Yeah, they don't, she don't use them that often, but, you know, just when they do, they're paid $50 to... Okay, let's see. Next question was the same issue, is with the, under the prosecutor with the pre-trial deferral. And he has a secretary that does additional duties, that is paid an additional $500, and he had requested that that salary, that additional salary request was to go up to 2,854, so I need to know on that one also.
Because we were at 500?
Yes.
Last year. I mean, I think we need to be consistent.
I do, I think you hold the line.
Yeah, so I think we should hold it at 500.
Okay. On the probation department, I, on the probation officers, the request was 2.10, so I checked with Greg today to verify that if we went with the 2%, we would still be at the minimum or above for his staff, and he assured that we are, so I'm assuming you want to stay at the 2% for his probation officers also.
Does the state set his?
Well, they set, they set a salary, but if we, if we go 2%, we're still going to be...
And they're above that all anyway, I believe, so...
Yes, yeah, they are, so even though he requested 2.1, I think if we go to 2, we're still on there. I just wanted to make sure that you're good with that.
Two percent even.
And the next note I had was under the jail, and Karen had requested that they add a shift supervisor or sergeant, I don't know what she really...
Lieutenant's versus sergeant's.
Yeah, I don't know which one it was, but she said it was a supervisor. We have a shift, we already have one shift supervisor, and I think she wanted to add a second shift supervisor, so I wanted to... so I wanted to see if that was all right with her.
I've got shift supervisor slash sergeant.
Okay, I thought she'd named him something, you know, so I couldn't remember the other sergeant.
That's what she used, yeah, sergeant.
We haven't looked at the shift supervisor, we have one, and she wanted to add the second one. So I needed to know if you wanted to add that.
So by doing that, then they increase, that's for the, they just get an increase for being titled that, right?
Yes, I'm not sure what duties go with it, but yes, there's an increase of five hundred and seventy-two dollars this year, so that would go up two percent, so.
Trying to remember, the death helper that could move somebody somewhere else? Is there an explanation on that? You guys remember?
I don't remember exactly what the conversation was, but-
I remember, I remember coming up, I was thinking it had something to do with they can, in case somebody has to be moved, they can bring them in.
I think it was more like a title.
But then they have that authority.
They want you to be charged, so that's why he's putting a title, sergeant.
I guess under the circumstances, I wouldn't have a problem with it if it helps them.
I'm more inclined to give it to two percent.
As long as it helps them to be more productive, I don't, I don't, it seems pretty innocent.
Well, the fact there isn't one in the second, there is on the third, seems like it's contrary to a practical structure.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be against it.
Yeah, so at this point, I guess we'll leave that alone.
To add it or not add it?
Or to get it at all.
Add it, okay.
Leave it like it is, yeah.
That is all of the notes that I had.
So any new, as far as the commissary arrangement?
Oh, yes, I talked to him about that, yes, and I made that change, yeah.
Oh, you did already?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah.
So I guess with that, that takes, because we had the cars in the shared budget.
Yes.
So that would take lease cars down to the general fund.
The fifty-six thousand is what I took it down to.
Okay, so you've got that in there, okay. Now, I had mentioned to Damani, the question in regards to could we try to find monies for a second jail? I said, you know, if you're doing commissary and you're willing to, you know, pay for a car out of your council, I mean, it's not going to be an equal match, it's what, twenty-seven thousand or whatever, that saves general fund, is that about right?
About twenty-seven thousand, but a deputy's a lot more than that.
Yeah, a deputy's going to be thirty-five plus, right? Or no, not a deputy, I'm sorry, not a jailer.
A jailer was thirty-five. Thirty-three plus.
A jailer was thirty-five plus, so I just told him, I would bring it out to the council to see if that was any way to help him out at this point. I didn't promise anything, I just said, "We're just going to, you know, bring the conversation up and see," you know, since we've... The request keeps coming up for more jailers and, you know, everything that's involved, if you want to do some trading, could we do it, you know, would it be something that would be... But again, the jailer's not going to go away, a car's a one-time purchase, and it's obviously in the scheme of our monies.
His commissary fund, that was the real question in the last meeting.
If he had, if it was available to, but we couldn't do a jailer out of the commissary, so that's why we have, you know, if you do a jailer, it would have to be in the general, it would be an add-on, and... So I just thought, I told him, I said, "I would mention it to council and see what the thoughts are." I mean, I, one part of me, I-
I sympathize with the jailers and the situation there when the jail's full, but when it's not full, then it's, there's extra people in a way, but I guess I'm not excited to add more staff, to be deadly honest.
The part that caught me was when Karen was explaining that we created the video, which takes a person to be, after I started thinking about it, "Oh, okay, you know, it's all, it's saving us money" on one side of inefficiencies, and at the same time, now we've created another problem in jail, I happen to have a jailer there while that's taking place, and then they're short back behind, and then obviously, if they're, somebody calls in sick, so. Like I said, I just thought I'd bring the conversation out, I told him I would, so to see if we... Again, it's going to be more thirty-five plus.
At the base salary, thirty-three, for twenty-eighteen, will be thirty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-one.
By the time we had parole.
But then if you add-
They're on a merit.
Yeah, but if you add second or third shift.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they're per.
Yeah, oh, they're per, okay.
They're per, and then you also add FICA, and you also add-
So, you know, for you-
All these other insurance stuff.
Pushing forty, yeah, forty, forty, so. Like I said, I-
Jim?
With this council thing.
When I read the paper last night, I went to my trustee's old red book, we did, and I think Chuck looks in there and all.
I've viewed through mine several times, yeah.
Yeah, and so I just kind of went, man, their budget is a lot higher than all the rest of the counties I compared, which is right next to us. Now, I don't know if, how the jails, what size they are, because I didn't have the chance to dig that up, but, you know, their appropriations and personal service was not a hundred percent. The one was a hundred and thirty-three percent, the other a hundred and fifty percent. You know, which made the other counties what's going on, to me. And we're already above, you know, their appropriations is bigger than all of those other. I compared Adams, Blackford, Huntington, Jay, and Walbash to Wells County.
Sometimes they'll budget the jail with the sheriffs. Did you look at those budgets to compare to? Because sometimes, everybody, it's just how it's got, gets reported, and sometimes, some people's, some counties budget jail and sheriff together.
Together.
Yeah, and some counties don't, you know, so when you, you might want to look at both of those in Adams together, then compare, just because I just know there's different ways how people report it.
Yeah, how do we do it? Do we report it together?
No, we report it separate, because we have it on two different-
Two different?
We report it separately.
Items with our lines, you know, with our items.
Yeah, when you go to that, you can see the, for the sheriff and for the jail. And of course, I didn't compare those two.
I just know sometimes they're reported that way, so I don't know what the difference is, I have no idea.
For the jail, we're higher than what, quite a bit higher than what Adams County has, on about four hundred thousand.
And I think they're smaller jail, they're building their jail.
They have a smaller jail.
Their next one might not be, the numbers might change.
I don't know how many they, they almost got in that.
And Huntington, I think's comparable, isn't it? I don't know inmate-wise, I don't know what they-
I'm not sure what their inmate-
Yeah, I'm very careful, I don't know.
Knowing what we know now with the operating budget, and we've already given one jailer, I'm more inclined to stay where we're at now, but I understand your offer, or your discussion, I should say, of that, but...
I feel the same way, I think that, you know, we've cut everybody, I feel bad for everybody if they didn't get what they asked for, but we are under a budget, and it's a tax-based budget, so we have to go with what we have.
There's an absolute critical need for the one, no doubt in my mind.
Like I said, we've been, last year, we were able to do two, obviously, our budget was fundable to do that, and this year with the one, if we can keep poking away at it, I guess eventually, we can get to where we need to be, but... Yeah, that's fine, I just, you know, I'd mentioned to him if we did that.
By that time, the state will change the-
Yeah, there'll be another, trust me, there'll be something else that comes up to do it, so. I think that's all I had. But since Thursday's meeting, that we're going to bring forth for tonight.
Yeah, those were the only questions I had.
Okay. So so far, we should be, at this point in time, appears around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for operating balance. Okay, unfortunately, that number just doesn't want to stay.
Hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty?
I mean, it's-
That takes more reasons to stay where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously a lower operating balance than what we traditionally would like to have, but, you know, at this point, I don't know what more we can, we can take out of this to increase. It doesn't matter, eventually, it's all going to back, you know, it's a fundable budget, right, at this stage, so it's something that-
Also, if we had to change the levy, that hurt.
Yeah, yeah, but at least it's a fundable budget, which from the state's understanding, or what we understand from the state, that's typically, that's what they are looking to see, because if you don't have a fundable budget, they will make it fundable for you. So at this stage, at least, we were able to make these decisions, popular or unpopular, it may be. Anything from any other council members, if you think of what we've, anything we've missed, or we could address, or?
I've forgotten where I said it.
Beth, any, again, anything?
No, that's all the points I had.
Well, I guess at this stage, I would like to make a motion on the salaries. I know, since we're basically, this budget's still open for change, right, up till our public hearing.
Up to your adoption.
Excuse me, up to our adoption will be the time that we will make a, well, yeah, the adoption will make the motion to accept the budget as completed. At this stage, I think it'd be wise to take a motion on the two percent increase for salaries. At least we'll have that amongst us so that we know what that amount is, and we're not going back on that. Can we have a motion to accept the two percent raise for salaries?
I'll make a motion to accept the two percent.
We have that motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor, signify, raise your hand. It was the same, so at least the way that carries. So at this point, we'll put this thing to bed, and in our October third meeting, is that the, that's hearing?
That's the public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. So we'll have that, and then we will, finishing changes, are we getting more information?
Yeah, so I was going to say, finishing changes.
That's why we need to just put it, close it, and then be late to work.
The last email I got from him was, "You are a hundred percent okay to publish your..."
Yeah.
Of course, because I sent him like three emails, "Look at this, am I good?" I'm a hundred percent sure you're okay to advertise your budget, so.
Well, as like I said, I just want to close it, and then we'll keep it, we're still, there's a pin stuck in there.
Exactly.
We have to make a change, yes. Well, I'd like to thank everybody, I thought the conditions that went well, I think everybody understood the situation. And again, a budget's a calculated guess, as we all know, it's, hopefully, if all departments in the county can maintain the budget, we'll do fine, if not, then we'll be having some problems, but otherwise, I don't think that'll happen. I guess at this point, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, signify, raise your hand.